All right, everyone, we're going live on Facebook. Says we're live. Thank you so much.
Everything go good there? I'll check my key.
Welcome, council members. Just letting you know, so far it looks like the over/under on tonight's meeting is 8:15 PM. So place your bets. It's like everyone was talking is 8:15 PM. So I think Donna's taking the over. Molly's definitely taking the over, but I believe in all of you. So we shall see what happens.
Very nice.
We're at work. We're lucky you don't have a ladder.
Yeah, we do. It's a lot of people coming to the thing. Even though you don't want to part of my day. I'm excited for you. Thank you. I'm excited. We're talking about the therapy dog for a therapy medical hospital. No, I haven't said we don't. I know you were talking about this. He's a, I want to get comfortable with Barbara, but he's actually, he's a therapy dog in Ohio State. In a program called Pupat Posits for their staff. But he's actually working, it's today Monday. He's working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, going to visits there. Tomorrow, I think the neighbors will.
All right.
More than I used to. No, not. Yeah. Yeah. Great day for me. I guess. A little less work. I'm excited.
President Jenkins, all council members are online.
Hi, Angie.
Hello, how are you? Welcome to our meeting this evening. Glad to see you.
Thanks for having me. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is October 12, 2020. Reynoldsburg City Council meeting. The time is now 6:31. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins. This meeting is being held through electronic conferencing and livestream on the city's Facebook page. Council is still meeting virtually as the necessary equipment that is needed to livestream our meetings just arrived recently and is in the process of being installed. Council anticipates that the October 26, 2020 meeting will be back in person in council chambers. Molly, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Silvati.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Row. Councilmember Cottner.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember Peckera.
Yeah.
And President Jenkins.
Here. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. There is a change in the agenda this evening. Item 10A on the consent agenda for emergency approval will need to be removed from the consent agenda as an amendment needs to be made. If there are no other changes to the agenda, it will stand as amended. Item four is approval of minute. Approval of the city council regular meeting minutes of September 28, 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Item five, we have community comments. Molly, did you receive any comments from the community?
Yes, we have several here this evening, and we're going to start with Mr. Simpson. He's Vice President of the FOP. Can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Actually, this is Keith Farrell, the President of Capital City Lodge Number Nine. Jeff was not available tonight, and I certainly wanted to reach out to your leadership. I just wanted to comment, I believe, tonight you're passing or having the final reading for your citizen review board language that we have worked with. Is that correct? Is that what you want to turn to me? So I'm sure.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I wanted to commend you all and appreciate the leadership you have shown as setting an example for all cities within Franklin County to work with FOP 9. I know someone reached out to us. We had some very good dialogue and shared concerns on both sides from elected officials, the public, the officers that serve the city. And I think with working together and having that good dialogue, we were able to come up with something. And I simply wanted to applaud you for your leadership and your effort in that process, saving the taxpayers thousands of dollars by simply working with the officers in your community and the Fraternal Order Police to facilitate this. And hopefully, we can all move forward together. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in this evening. And what did you say your name is?
My name is Keith Farrell, and I'm the President of Capital City Lodge Number Nine, the Fraternal Order Police.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Madam President, we have Herman Wright here in council chambers who would like to make a comment about the civilian review board also.
Once again, I'm Herman Wright. I reside on Glacier Avenue here in Reynoldsburg. I think you've, obviously, you've heard from me before. I've been a citizen of residence since about 19 years now. And since I've previously stated my opposition to the proposed civilian police review board, I won't go into that detail again tonight. I will only say that, again, I believe that the proposal is a solution in search of a problem. Our police department is not racist. It does not consist, it does not have a consistent or sustained history of racist behavior. I noticed after my previous comments, someone went back, did some research on the history of our police department, and one incident was noted that goes back 27 years. I submit to you that 20, 27 years is an awful long time. So I don't believe that whatever problem existed then exists today. At least in my 19 years of being here, I haven't seen that to be the case. It has been indicated by some on council that some of the citizens of Reynoldsburg are concerned about possible negative interactions with the police. And as you know, I've been here twice. I've stated my opposition previously. So what I would like to do is discuss, on the other hand, something that might be of benefit to the residents of Reynoldsburg because someone said that in some prior comments that there were citizens here in Reynoldsburg who had some deep concerns or reservations about their possible interactions with the police. And what I suggest is that perhaps, and I congratulate council on the fact that you guys are pretty experienced, you're all bright people. So I think that you guys can do a lot in a positive way to work in partnership with the police, police department. I'd like to recommend that possibly, possibly that council work with the police department to put together some type of education for the residents of Reynoldsburg. Education in the schools. We have kids today, it's been said, who fear interaction with the police. Now, I wonder why that is, possibly because of perceived notions, possibly because they've never been educated by their parents on what to do in the event of an encounter with the police. So they haven't been told, or their misconceptions or their concerns haven't been addressed either by council, by our police department, by our schools, by their parents, or whatever. So I think council could devote some time to working with the police department instead of setting up some type of education within the schools so that the members of the police department could go into some of these classrooms, and I believe we have some police resource officers. But beyond that, some of these police officers could be in the schools and have a discussion with these kids, not a lecture, but to find out from these kids what it is they think or perceive when they have an encounter with the police. What is, what is it they fear? And what should they do in the event of an encounter? I can tell you personally that I witnessed, oh, in the last several months, a family member in an encounter with the police. I did everything I could to encourage him as to the right way to handle the encounter. And I didn't involve him directly. It involved someone else, but we happened to be present. And I had to talk to him and say, look, whatever the issue is, if you were involved in this encounter, right now is not the time for attitude. Not, not now is the time beside the road here to engage in negative conversation or comments with a police officer. It is better to deal with the situation. Yes, officer, no officer, how should I proceed, officer? If there is a problem, then deal with it later. But you don't deal with it at the side of the road. You don't give attitude. You don't do those things. So that was my personal witness to this, to this situation. As to, yes. Okay. As to adults here in the, in the city, perhaps council could disseminate some educational material for them to find out what their perceptions are and to see how we can address these things, and perhaps council could have a meeting directed by both council and the police department with residents of the city to work on ways that we could all better interact with each other. I want to congratulate all of you for your, your patience. I want to congratulate you on your talent. I'd like to congratulate the new chief and the assistant chief, and I hope that we can work with our police, police department in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, now Director Baumann would like to address council regarding trunk or treat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. I'm going to speak today on behalf of the Reynoldsburg Community Association. They have a few events planned for Halloween. The traditional Halloween party that they've put on for many years cannot take place, obviously, because of COVID, so they have some new ideas. So on this Saturday, October 18th, will be pie pumpkin pickup. So it's a smaller sized pumpkin for the children who are eight and under who can come by to come by the Kroger at Main and Taylor, pick up a pumpkin and decorate it, and then there'll be some virtual contests, and that will be from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. To get specifics as to where to park and the traffic flow, if you go to the Reynoldsburg Community Association's Facebook page, you can get all of that there. And then on October 24th, there will be a trunk retreat out at Civic Park from 3:00 until 6:00 or whenever candy runs out, whichever comes first. And they have 12 business sponsors that will be there that will have their trunks decorated, and they will drive through at Civic, and the kids will receive their candy. Everyone is encouraged to come in costume, and face masks are required of those who are participating as the decorated trunks and those people driving through as well. So that is from 3:00 to 6:00 at Civic on, on October 24th. And then beginning on October 18th until October 25th, they will have various virtual contests. So if you go to the RCA Facebook page, you'll receive all of that information there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Madam President, Chief Baker would like to introduce our new Assistant Chief.
Good evening, President, members of council. I'm excited today to announce the hiring of Rhonda Grisell. She has over 25 years of experience with the Columbus Division of Police, and she really hit on all the areas that we were looking for in a candidate. If I said, I said that we hit a home run with this hire, that would be an understatement. So I'm going to go ahead and say we really hit a grand slam. So I want to take this opportunity to allow you to meet Rhonda and to ask any questions that you may have. So I'll step to the side.
Good evening, members of council. I am blessed to be here and so excited to be joining Mayor Begany and Chief Baker and all of you and serving the citizens of Reynoldsburg. I'm just thrilled to be here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. We welcome you to Reynoldsburg. We are happy and excited to have you here.
All right. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to just say, welcome, welcome to Reynoldsburg, welcome to the police force. And hope to talk to you in person soon so we can get familiar with each other.
Absolutely, absolutely. Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Council President, I just want to quickly say before he leaves that to the FOB, FOP president, thank you for coming on and giving your support to the civilian review board. And we all look forward to this review board so we can work together in collaboration. And so I just want to say thank you for coming on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we have two comments that I will read into the record from local residents. The first one is from Tamara Watkins at 7833 Priestley Drive. Both of these comments, by the way, are about an increased cost in water bills. And both comments have been forwarded last week to the Water Department and the Utility Director, and they have been in touch with both of these residents. Tamara Watkins, "I would like my concerns to be presented at the city council meeting on Monday, October 12th regarding my water bill tripling. I've had a plumber come in and check, and I don't have any leaks, so I'm trying to understand why the substantial increase." The other comment is from Cindy Parker at 1968 Haverton Drive. "I will apologize to start because this may be a longer email than most. With that being said, what is happening with our water bills? They have become outrageous. I am on the app next door, and my neighbors are all complaining. Here's my example. I bought this house in 2017. My son and his wife lived with me at the time. That's three adults, no children. I was asked when I first called to set up my service about the number of people moving in the house. I inquired as to why that was an issue if we were billed actual usage. I was concerned about being prorated as I try to be a little more conservative when it comes to using utilities. She assured me it didn't work that way, so for the next two and a half years, my bill for three of us averaged somewhere around $278. Sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, but expectations were in that area. I figured roughly $33 per person per month. That was pretty accurate. Now it's only one person. I do have a pool, and that may have accounted for the little spikes in the summer, but I avoid using the hose to fill the pool. I expect to pay more when I do. Last May, my son and his wife moved to their own place, so naturally I assumed, silly me, that my bill would show a significant decrease since there were less showers, toilets, flushing, teeth brushing, loads of laundry, et cetera. Just the dishwasher alone was run every night or every other night when there, there were dishes. Now, now it is run maybe three or four times a month. That's two-thirds of the users gone. Pardon me. I have always watered my flowers, never the whole lawn, which even if I really watered this year, I felt it would be offset by less people using water here. Yet, when I received my bill in September, I nearly had a heart attack. It was higher than ever. At $330 for one person, what's going on? When I called the Water Department, they were condescending and rude. They never really addressed my question as to what was going on. I've been told by my neighbors that they were told they might have a leak, all of us at the same time. I was told by another neighbor that they were told it was old meters that were at fault. Then come, then come replace it. Again, all of us at the same time. Something needs to be done, and soon. People are really upset. Go on next door and look at all of the comments. When I moved here, many people turned up their noses and said, uh, Reynoldsburg, but I love it here. But this exorbitant and outrageous type of bill is the very thing that pushes people out. Property taxes go up and up as well. I am one person living in my home, and I feel this water bill is beyond ridiculous. What is happening? Replace my old meter if this really is an issue. Hopefully, I am not prorated at three people, as I told your department. It is only me now, and as you might guess, I'm a little hawked off. Thank you in advance for taking the time to read this. And Madam President, that is all the comments for this evening. From residents.
Do we have any comments from council this evening? Mayor Begany, do you have any comments this evening?
I do have a few, but I believe I saw Councilman Baker raise his hand first. I just wanted to make sure that I recognize that.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to find the new button. Just real quick, just a quick reminder to, for those who like to nominate somebody for the First Annual Mel Clemens Community Service Award, the forms are now on the city's website, and if there's somebody you believe that's going above and beyond servicing the community, please nominate them, and we will recognize them in December. They will get a nice plaque from the city, and their name will be Edges Stone, well, Kindred Stone on the plaque hanging in the lobby of City Hall. So that's all I have.
And what's the deadline for that submission?
I believe it's, Donna, do you remember what the deadline is? I believe it's in November.
October 29th.
October, okay.
Okay, October 29th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other comments from anyone on council? Thank you. Mayor Begany?
Yes, I just have a few brief comments. Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just wanted to let you know that in reference to Herman Wright's comments about getting involved with the schools, believe it or not, earlier this summer, the chief and I sat down with the superintendent and did discuss exactly that, getting our officers in the school where it would be more of a conversational piece. We also hope that eventually we can reinstitute a version of the illumination project that had been able to address some of the concerns of the citizens and how they relate with the police force. Unfortunately, COVID has kind of delayed a number of those initiatives, and I believe with Reynoldsburg students returning to school next week, we should give them a little bit of time to get used to that world before we kind of get involved from the police side on that one. In addition, the water bills are of great concern to us here at City Hall. We've been dealing with a number of issues over the last couple of days. Also, as we kind of move forward, my first piece of advice to any resident that has a concern about the water bill is to please make sure you contact the Water Department. We are more than happy to try and make arrangements and explain why we are having the issues that we are having or why they are, why their bills are the way they are. But believe it or not, it is almost as simple as, you know, one flush of the toilet, one extra run of the dishwasher, things of that nature that is there. But we are willing to work with the residents to help explain the circumstances, and if there are issues with meters, those things can be addressed as well. I'm sure for people who have questions, they can contact, again, the Water Department or Director William Dorman. I do have one proclamation that I will read. The other two I do have, but council will take the lead on this one. "I am a big believer in prevention of bullying, and believe it or not, October is International Bullying Prevention Month." So I'm going to go ahead and read my proclamation. "Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones. And whereas thousands of Ohio children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. Whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas children who are bullied are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now, therefore, I, Joe Begany..." Now, therefore, I, Joe Begany, Mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, proclaim October 2020 as National Bullying Prevention Month. Be it resolved that Reynoldsburg City Schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. And I would also like to include and adults. Bullying unfortunately does not just stop once you exit the educational world. With that, I do thank you for your comments. If you have any other questions, as always, my door is open. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item six. We have a presentation this evening, and we would like to welcome Les Samaji, who is the Director of the Reynoldsburg Visitors Bureau. Director Samaji will be giving the annual report regarding the state of the hospitality industry in the city of Reynoldsburg. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Begany, President Jenkins, and City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you. This is my pleasure. And what I'd like to start with is to remind you what I said at your presentation about approximately a year ago. A year ago, I came before you, and I said that there were $219 million industry in tourism in Ohio compared to about $178 million 10 years before that. Visitors spent $44 million in Ohio, $10 billion, $10 billion more than 10 years before that, and $111 million per day, no, $111 per day for trips and overnight trips. I was really happy to say that. I was really happy to report that. Unfortunately, a year has gone by. And we fast forward to August 2020, and the picture is not so rosy, and as you might expect. Our travel and hospitality industry is one of the most affected industries in this COVID crisis. Experience Columbus has lost millions of dollars in bet tax revenue, and the impact was felt throughout their participation in promotion of local activities as well as in their workplace. The money lost to Ohio Columbus and the surrounding visitors bureaus has been tremendous. Some of the areas affected more severely than others. When you see these travel industry surveys, you can see why. And I'm going to quote some of them. 73% of the travelers planning to travel in the next six months will change their travel plans due to COVID. 42% canceled trips altogether. 47% reduced travel plans, and 27% changed the destination where they could drive instead of fly. And 16% changed international travel plans to domestic. And of course, the biggest reason impacting travel plans has been obviously the COVID. Other reasons included concerns about the economy and transportation costs. And the majority of the people surveyed said that they are hesitant to travel because travel restrictions and health issues, protocols are unclear to them. They're just not sure what to believe, and the answer, the question is, like, what? Like, I don't know what? Like, you don't know who to believe, and like, you don't know what's going on? A huge portion surveyed said that they did not feel safe traveling outside of their communities. The biggest problem was that nobody knows what's going on. Like, nobody has a clear answer of what's going on, and that it's affecting the travel or the hospitality industry. So here at Experience Reynoldsburg, we started the year very enthusiastically. We had a major budget. We had a major, we had some great plans. And of course, by the middle of March, all those plans fell apart. We are able to carry out a couple of the projects. One of our partnerships, what, a couple of the projects, one of our partnerships with Reynoldsburg Helping Hands was very successful. We did that in April. We we tried to improvise on our activities, and we partnering with local groups. That was the greatest thing that we could ever do, knowing that nothing else was going on. And that was very successful. The other one was the magazine that we published in the spring, which was, again, financially successful and editorially was very successful. We hit some good points. We touched on some great things, and we sold some ads. And, you know, that's really what made us successful. We are currently planning the fall issue of the magazine, which will focus on small business. How small business is coping with COVID? And as far as the magazine is concerned, it's sold out. Like, right now, we have no more place for advertising. We're all done, and we are just about completing the editorial portion of the magazine. We are also keeping an eye on opportunities to partner with many other organizations, at least for now. Right now, we don't have anything really planning, any activities planning, including city and us and anybody else. Everybody's just like sort of staying online. So for now, we're just kind of holding back. The office is currently undergoing a routine biannual state audit, and it should be completed in the coming weeks. Just to give you a preference of how bad the hospitality industry is right now. The Cleveland, the Cleveland Visitors Bureau has furloughed 30 people, about 50% of their staff. Columbus furloughed about 37% of their staff. About 21 members lost their jobs, or at least for now. The downtown Columbus Welcome Center for Experience Columbus has closed. Eastern is still open, but downtown, which was the major, the biggest office, has closed. They lost $6 million in revenue and $1.5 million deficit, $1.5 million deficit. So they're working out of their reserves, as are we in Reynoldsburg. We are pretty much working out of our reserves. Even though, although Columbus, the city, has lost a lot of convention business, suburbs have done fairly well. And I'm not saying fairly well, but much, much better than the city, which means that we have gotten some of our bet tax. We are still, this is now October. Normally, we're done with our bet tax revenue by July. It's now October, and we're still haven't reached our total. Our total is $75,000, and we still haven't reached it, which just means that the bet tax is not coming in. Well, yeah, it's not coming in, but it's better in the suburbs than in the city because they don't have any conventions. The conventions have dried up. So, you know, I'm optimistic that we are doing well. We're not promoting anything because nothing is going on, but we are partnering with a lot of local community organizations so that we can stay relevant and we can be, you know, we can be somewhat of a force in using these dollars and letting them work for the community. Most of the area visitors bureaus are trying the same thing. They're trying to get really involved with local communities and local organizations. They're trying to pivot and adapt to what's going on locally because nothing else is going on. And, you know, we're just waiting until this thing is over before we can start doing the same things that we've been doing for 30, 32 years of promoting tourism, promoting, promoting being a cheerleader for Reynoldsburg, which we still are, but it's just in a little different way. I appreciate the opportunity to tell you that we are financially doing well, and we are very conservatively spending and very conservatively planning for the future, and we're keeping an eye on what's going on. And we will be reporting to you in another year or sooner, if you want, on what we're doing. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. I just have one question since the Helping Hands project that you had was so successful. Do you have any plans to do that again?
Probably next in the spring, yes. We will come back in the spring, and we will do it again. We are now being partnering with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank as well. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank and the Reynoldsburg Education Association. We are partnering with all, both of those organizations to help them raise money for food and for the education association. That's going on like right now, like in the next week or two. But in the spring, we will be back again helping Reynoldsburg Helping Hands. That was a very satisfying project, very good project, and it's very good for Reynoldsburg, and it's a very smart way of spending money.
Yes. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Well, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Samaji, for coming in and giving us that report. It was very educational to learn more about the Reynoldsburg Visitors Bureau. And I know that, you know, everyone is suffering because of COVID, and things are much different. I just learned today that the Polaris Mall is extending their hours, so things are opening up a little bit more. It's just that things that have to do with the arts and things that, as far as bringing in tourism into Reynoldsburg and Columbus, things are just quite different right now. So hopefully, after next, the beginning of 2021, that things will be different. We hope.
I can assure you, Mrs. Jenkins, that I'm keeping an eye on this whole thing. I, on a monthly basis, I'm in touch with Experience Columbus, which is the major organization that we belong to and we cooperate with and to see what's going on there and what's going on in the suburbs. And whatever happens, you know, we will be on top of it. We're going to try to make the best decisions we can, and hopefully that we can resume our normal activities within the next 10 to 12 months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we will move on to item number seven, which is communications, but we don't have any other communications this evening. So we'll move on to item eight, which is motions. We have a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I'm going to ask Councilmember Lawson Rowe to introduce Ms. Juanita Dean, and she will also be reading the legislation this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be reading the resolution, but before I do that, I'd like to introduce to some that don't already know our community positive contributor, Mrs. Juanita Dean. I met her several years ago when our boys were young. Ms. Dean works with the food service team, so she actually serves lunches to many of our kids if they're at the Summit Campus. So without further ado, I'd like to ask Mrs. Dean if she would unmute and please share her survivor story.
Thank you, Madam President of Council, members of council, and Mayor Begany. Good evening. I'm thankful for this opportunity to speak with you today in the month in which we commemorate breast cancer awareness. I would like to thank my good friends, Councilwoman Meredith Rowe, for inviting me to speak this evening. We watch our sons grow up in the Reynoldsburg School District, taking classes together and playing sports together, and we are proud that they are now fine college students. I recognize my neighbor, Councilwoman Ms. Angie Jenkins, our president, and Ms. Strickland. Her son also was playing football with my son. So we all go way back. But my name is Juanita Dean, and I am a breast cancer survivor as of July 2019. My family has a history of breast cancer. My grandmother passed away at the age of 54 with breast cancer. I would like to share with you my experience with breast cancer, how I discovered it, and what I went through. First, I give honor to my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for His grace and mercy that brought me through quite an ordeal. Second, I'm thankful for the support, love, kindness, and care extended to me from many friends, family, including my church family, and the medical staff that so diligently worked with me throughout my procedure, surgery, and various treatments. On my daughter's birthday, November 29, 2018, I saw an unusual lump on the upper part of my left breast. I thought it was like a large mosquito bite, but when I looked at it, it was under my skin. I asked my husband to look at it, and he said, and he was immediately concerned. He took me to the emergency room. The doctor examined the lump and said that they did not have the equipment needed for further testing. So they advised me that I make an acute visit with my OB-GYN. At my visit, my OB-GYN advised that we would At my visit, my OBGYN advised that we would make that she would make me an appointment with a breast cancer doctor because she didn't like what she saw. He also sent me for a biopsy. After the biopsy, I visited my breast cancer doctor, Dr. Slam, who review whose review of the pathologist's report confirmed that I had breast cancer. Fortunately, Dr. Slam told me that I had caught it very early and it was a stage zero cancer. But they needed more tests to see how severe the cancer was and if it was aggressive. The day after Christmas, I went in for my lumpectomy. They removed the mask and took out three lymph nodes. Thankfully, the lymph nodes did not show any signs that the cancer had metastasized or spread. So it was confirmed to that cancer, that area of my breasts. They sent the cells off to a genetic lab in California that conducted what they call an ONCO test. This test checked twenty-one different genes to see how aggressive the cancer was and the actual size of it. The test results came back and my cancer was upgraded to a stage-two cancer. It was about two-point-three centimeters, almost as wide as an inch wide. But also the ONCO test revealed that this was an aggressive cancer, grade three. Another part of the test looked for, another part of the test looked for how aggressive the cancer was and its future behavior. Anything below twenty-five meant that I did not need chemotherapy, just radiation treatment. A score of thirty-one and higher meant that my chances of survival without chemotherapy were not good and the cancer could return in other parts of my body. My score was a sixty-seven. I underwent four treatments of chemotherapy at the Zane Meister Center. One treatment every three weeks. The chemo treatment itself was wasn't bad, but after each session, I was extremely tired and nothing tastes good. My family encouraged me to eat and take in nutrients to keep my strength up. Every day, my husband would check my temperature and try to feed me and keep me hydrated. I spent most of my days in bed or setting up in a recliner. My family kept our house very sterile and germ-free. One of the worst part of my chemo was losing my hair. My fingernails and my toenails turned dark as the chemo made its way through my body, killing both good and bad cells. Then the best day for me was the day I had my last chemo session. In the cancers, in the cancer center, they had a bell that you could ring when you're completed your session. It's like graduation day. I was so happy when I got to ring that bell. My husband and son were right there to watch me. After my chemo session, I had to have twenty radiation treatments every day except weekends. My second happy day was when my radiation treatment was completed and I got to ring the bell again. The blood test revealed that I was an official cancer survivor. I still have to take a cancer pill for five years and get my blood work checked. And my hair is starting to come back, but I thank God for being with me and comforting me throughout my treatment. I could not have made it without the Lord and I was encouraged and hopeful from the start. I never shed a tear upon discovering and during my treatments. I encourage every woman and young lady to start early, making sure that they get regular mammograms and pap smears. It was by chance that I found my lump. I hope and pray that if life takes you down the path that I had to go through, that you find yourself yours early as well. I'm a living testimony and I love to share my story to anyone with the hopes that it will be an encouragement to someone who may have cancer. I have new life, new hope, new faith and new hair. I thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. May God bless you all. I'm a survivor.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking and telling your story. I didn't know the whole story, but I thank you for uh sharing your story. Um, self-exams actually were in that case, and so that's, that was amazing that you were able to discover it yourself without waiting for the examination.
Right.
Um, we'll have Councilmember Lawson Rowe read the legislation, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Council President, can I say one thing before uh Councilwoman Lawson Rowe read the resolution? Because I want to get this off my chest. Um, her story touched me um very deeply because my mom passed away from breast cancer. And they only gave her a few months, but God willing, she lived the two years before she passed to the age of fifty, which is very young. And so I'm over here getting misty-eyed because I know what you went through. I seen it. My mom using, losing her hair and, you know, her nails and losing her appetite. So I just want to commend you for not giving up. My mom never gave up. She went out fighting. I always said that uh she didn't give up on time. Time just ran out. And so I just want to say I commend you and all the women who are survivors. Uh, from coming from a male, please get checked out, whether it's uh pap smear or um your breasts, get checked out and men too, men too. So I just want to say that before the resolution was read. Thank you.
Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Dean, for sharing your survivor warrior story, and we just appreciate your courageous spirit and and your willingness to share. I'd like to offer um a resolution in recognizing breast cancer awareness month. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And whereas for women in the United States, breast cancer death rates are are higher than those uh for any other cancers besides lung cancer. And whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among American women besides skin cancer. And whereas about one in eight United States women, about twelve-point-four percent will develop breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. In twenty-twenty, an estimated two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty cases of breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in and with October two thousand um my crappy suck. Man isn't have her breast. And whereas breast cancer men is rare, in two thousand twenty, an estimated two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty new cases of breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men. And whereas death rates from breast cancer have been declining and these changes are thought to be the results of treatment advances, early detection through screening and increased awareness. And whereas mammography and X-ray of the breast can detect breast cancer up to two years before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas all women and some men are at risk for breast cancer and we encourage the citizens of Reynoldsburg to increase the rate of screenings. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg. This council does hereby recognize and declare the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Reynoldsburg.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other comments from council?
Madam President, I would like to say a couple of words um to Ms. Dean. Um, I know them personally. Um, she was a fighter, is a fighter uh when she was going through this entire process. She was at the football game. She was at the basketball games cheering just not her child on, but every child that played. And I just want to thank you so much for being here this evening. Um, you know, our, my husband and I prayed for you. Our kids are friends. And um, you know, you are a survivor and I just appreciate you just keeping on. You know, keeping on that fight, not giving up. And this woman, I tell you, she, every time I saw her, she had a smile on her face. And she, you know, was only but the Lord that helped you through that and also your husband, who was your strength. You know, and also your child, your other, your daughter who was there um helping on. It was a family effort. And again, I I saw you when you were going through this entire process. And I just thank God that you are still here fighting on and encouraging others to continue that fight. Thank you.
Then I could also add to that. She is my neighbor and we have been together on the football sidelines, baseball sidelines, cheering our children on. We have been speed demons on the highway getting to church. I'm gonna tell all your secrets.
You didn't hear that.
But we were going to church. So anyway, um, and not the same church, but speeding on the highway, trying to get there on time. But um, but we've been together for quite a number of years and I have seen you go through this process. And I want to thank you for putting up with Evan in the lunchroom line because we know that Evan can be something else. So I want to say that I that I appreciate you and we have had such a fun time, you know, enjoying our children and in sports. So um, I'm very happy that you're a survivor and yes, you have been very blessed. So.
I appreciate it. And also may I uh say something about uh Mr. Cotner. His wife was my son's teacher and we love her. So please tell her I said hello, okay, Mr. Cotner.
I would be happy to do that. And uh, yeah, we we kind of love her too. So she's been listening and hears and wishes you her best also. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Is there a second, please?
I second.
Councilmember Packerell? Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Next, we'll move on to item B, a motion to approve a resolution recognizing domestic violence awareness month. Councilmember Bryant?
Thank you, President Jenkins. Resolution and recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in just one day in the United States and its territories, nearly seventy-five thousand victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than nine thousand requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare and legal representation could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet the needs of the victims. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community and throughout the United States. And whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality or other factors help perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. And whereas the need for safe houses continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need. And whereas the City of Reynoldsburg joins with others across Ohio and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in the City of Reynoldsburg. And whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions and systems. It adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Reynoldsburg that we recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage the community to support and uh to to supporting and finding assistance for anyone experiencing domestic violence.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? May I have a motion for approval?
I'll motion.
Councilmember Baker is second?
Second.
Councilmember Meredith Lawson Rowe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero. Next, we'll move on to our reports this evening. We have a liquor permit, permit. Chief Baker, please.
This application is for a liquor permit transfer from NBT Investment Group LLC to Quick seven-five-nine-six LLC. The owner of Quick seven-five-nine-six LLC is Sherazad Mobarak. The permit holder is doing business as Quick and Cold Drive-Thru located at seventy-five ninety-six East Main Street. He does not hold any other liquor permits at this time. There have been three police-related calls at the location from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. The most serious call for service at this location was on March twenty-six, two thousand twenty. This call was an assault. The old permit holder was cited just this year on July twelfth, two thousand twenty for furnishing alcohol to a person under twenty-one years of age. The Ohio Department of Liquor Control advises us that this violation will need to be cleared up prior to the transfer of the license. The business is not situated in an area that would have an adverse effect on the operation of any hospitals, schools or playgrounds. I recommend that we do not appeal this transfer.
Thank you. Next, we'll have item B, the auditor's report.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Chief, so our choices are to request a hearing.
I do not uh believe we need to request a hearing.
Okay, thank you. Madam President, the auditor's office submitted the budget by department and classification for the months of July and August twenty twenty.
Thank you. Item C, under Reports, Development, Parks and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Oh, I am on the meeting. Okay. Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, this is the Development Park and Recreation Committee meeting for October twelfth, two thousand twenty. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Packerell, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, myself and Madam President. The first uh item on the agenda is an ordinance creating the Wagner Road Tax Increment Financing Financing Incentive District Incentive District declaring improvements to partials within each incentive district to be public proposed and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those partials to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of these services payments, and specifying the public infrastructure improvement that benefits or service partials in the incentive district. This order, this ordinance is before Council, oh, sorry, is before Council for its third reading and to amend Attorney Shook. Is there any questions or anything on this?
This is, this is just for an amendment. We discussed this at the public hearing at the last council meeting. There is a new section five. The purpose of this section is to make proper distribution of service payments to the Board of Trustees for Turo Township, associated with a renewal levy they had passed after January 1, 2006.
Okay. Is there any question or comments from the committee regarding this item?
Just real quick. So again, this is on to more adoption this evening, and again, this is a, this is a good development tool that can be used. Taxes that would be paid and things go to county kind of come into the city to help with this infrastructure. So, you know, if people, it's pretty detailed to go through TIF projects, so I just think, you know, we have to make sure the community knows if they want to ask, understand, learn a little bit more. Sitting and listening to some of the developers talk and like Andrew in the Development Department really explaining how TIFs can be beneficial to the city and to the community, it's very interesting. So just the benefits and the possibilities are good, and hopefully we can see the advantage here in the community in a, in a needed area for the development. Quite a few homes coming there, so just thank you.
Anybody else from the committee that would like to speak? Anybody from council? Okay. Seeing none, I move that we accept amendments as proposed by Attorney Shook and outline council in the materials that we received. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson-Roe. Any other discussion? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. I'm, I'm moving that we forward this ordinance to council for its third reading and approval as amended. So the next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Chapter 11, Planning and Zoning Code for the City of Reynoldsburg. Attorney Shook, would you like to speak?
Yes, I'm going to be asking Council not to forward this for a second read this evening. We are currently in the process of working through to make sure we make all the changes that we identify as, as helpful and necessary. We do have a small group of people who are continuing to work on that, and we will certainly accept suggestions, not just from council but from the public, for any changes that they would like to see as well. But at this time, we are not asking for this to go forward for a second read at this time. We're going to slow down the process and make sure we do it right.
Okay. Would you like for us to just hold this until our next council meeting this month?
Um.
Would that be sufficient or just table it until you figure out what date it will work?
I think we would table it until the first meeting in November.
November? Okay. Um, well then, is there any other questions for Attorney Shook regarding this?
Chairman, I do have a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Attorney Shook, I just wanted to make it public that I received a call from a neighbor who had a concern with the color of a paint that was on an area business, and after contacting Director Dorman, I understand that the, the code that is enforced regarding paint is only specific to historic Reynoldsburg. And I just wanted to make that public that I did address this neighbor's concern, and if we need to discuss that during the, the renovation of the, the current code, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Also wanted to make a note, I misspoke earlier, this has not even been sent to council for a first, yes, we are holding off on a first read until the first meeting in November, at which time council will then need to send it to the planning.
Is there any other comments or questions for Attorney Shook from the committee? Any from council? Okay, seeing none. I, I'll motion that we'll go ahead and table this until the first council meeting in November, so there's a lot of time to continue to work on this. As we said before, this is a living document, we want to get it right, and so we'll just go ahead and table it until the first meeting in November. The next item on the, on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Media Promotion Enterprises, MPE, for their 2021 Tomato Festival. Director Bowman?
Thank you, Chairman Baker, members of the committee. As, as you stated, this ordinance is to help begin prepare for the 2021 Tomato Festival. We are going to be very optimistic that we'll be able to have that event, and we would like to enter into agreement with MPE for media promotions. It will be for, he'll be the booking agent, or they will be the booking agent, and for production services, and we are requesting that this contract not exceed $90,000 for both of those services.
Is there any comment or question for Director Bowman on this item from the committee? Okay, anybody from council? Okay. Well, seeing none, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we forward this legislation on the council for its first reading. Is there a second? Councilman Pacaral? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Is there, sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. As there is no further business for the Development Park and Recreation Committee, I return this back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Item D, there is no Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting this evening. We'll move on to E, Public Service and Transportation Committee, Councilmember Strickland.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting for October 12, 2020. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Pacaral, Councilmember Lawson-Roe, myself, and President Jenkins. Item number one, an ordinance from the Reynoldsburg City Council supporting the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, project to refer, resurface US Route 40 and other related improvements in Franklin County. Director Dorman, would you like to talk a little bit more about this ordinance?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, just real briefly here, so if you remember last year, I think before I came on board, Director Bowler spoke about how ODOT is coming through as part of the urban paving program to do Main Street. The good thing was you guys were forthright enough to get all the utility work done ahead of time, so what they're going to be coming through now and doing is both districts are going to actually be working together, so we're going to get the entire section of Main Street repaved through our entire corporate limits, which is, which is great because there's actually two different ODOT districts that handle that. But part of that program, it does require us to pay 10% of those costs, and basically what we are doing now is just agreeing to reimburse ODOT for those expenses.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee on this legislation? Any from council?
I do have one question, Chair, Chair Strickland. Mr. Dorman, I noticed that the parts going along Main Street that they were putting down new sidewalks, which I do applaud, is there plans to continue to expand that towards the, the boundary line?
Yes, that's a good question. So, you know, we, we've talked about that, I know that we talked a few meetings ago about beginning a sidewalk program again next year. We're going to look at some areas where we have what we kind of call the missing gaps, you know, areas that where no sidewalk exists, and it's really prohibiting pedestrian access to and from certain areas of the city. I think when we look at that corridor, I don't want to speak too far ahead, but there is some opportunities for future development in some of those major sections where we are missing, even leisure trailer sidewalk, and hopefully when those areas develop, that would be a requirement of the developer, similar to what you're going to see happen with M.I. Homes on Wagner Road. They will build the leisure trail and the sidewalk along the frontage of their property, so that helps offset the city's, you know, cost and contribution, which is great. But they will then, you know, take up some of those gaps, and hopefully as we move along and development occurs, you'll start to see a lot of those areas fill in, and then we'll come in behind hopefully and connect the dots.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to ask that question because the other day I did see a gentleman walking the, the little small brim on Main Street as he was leaving Kroger, so I just wanted to ask that question because it is a safety concern.
Yeah, I agree. I do see quite a bit of that on my way to and from work, people even riding bikes all the way to Amazon and other places, so.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from council members? Or comments? I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson-Roe. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for a first reading. As there is no further business for the Public and Service Transportation Committee, I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. We'll move on to item D, which is Finance and Administration Committee, Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for October 12, 2020. The members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. The first item on the agenda for tonight is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the city insurance for 2020-2021, appropriating funds, waiving competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. This ordinance is actually being brought forward as a single-read emergency ordinance As all the council members hopefully will know, we about two weeks ago, we got a rather detailed memo explaining this ordinance. However, rather than me trying to paraphrase it, I'm going to ask Director Bowler if she could read into the record what this is about.
Good evening, Chairman Savadi, committee members, Council President Jenkins and council members. This piece of the legislation is just a request for changing of our liability and automobile insurance carriers and the policy date to be effective 10, 10/14 of 2020. Part of this is a result, the city has a obligation to carry a $10 million flood policy on the YMCA property as part of our package. We were originally quoted that this, and it was confirmed that we had the coverage beginning of 2020, and it was at an exceptionally low rate. However, it was never listed on any of our policies. After much follow-up, we were advised through our broker that Trident would not provide the coverage as promised for the flood, and they would refund our money. Of course, that was not our desire to have our money refunded, we wanted the coverage. The second issue we're dealing with, with our insurance is we've had fairly large loss ratios over the last few years, and we're looking at a substantial increase in premiums, which I have been now advised in writing from Trident that we're looking at between a $50,000 and a $65,000 increase in premiums for the coming year if we don't take some action. We were, and this would still require us securing a flood policy separately, so we would be up $50,000 to $65,000, and then buying additional flood policy. With all these factors in place, our broker at Willis has worked really diligently for us to secure the same coverage with Zurich, another company that will give us the $10 million flood policy for a premium of $252,707 for the year. They offered to have this go into effect on the 14th, which would then in fact give us the $10 million coverage that we need on the flood policy. I know this is unusual, and I do appreciate the one read, but with our loss ratio, we run the risk if we don't find this coverage soon that we could have another loss and the potential for them to rescind the offer of coverage. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Director Bowler. As she said, does anybody on the committee have questions? Anybody from council have questions for Director Bowler? Then I move we forward this ordinance to council for emergency approval tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Strickland. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right, the ordinance will be forwarded to council for emergency approval. So the second item on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing renewal of the city's dental insurance coverage with Delta Dental for the period of January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2022, and waiving competitive bidding. I'm told that either Otter Sisak or Attorney Shook might have comments on this. No? Okay.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Would love it.
So this is just our annual renewal for our dental coverage. Earlier in the year, we were informed that we were going to have a rate increase, and that we would not have a rate increase for '21 and '22. So I do have good news occasionally, that is a piece of it. Also, although this is not part of this legislation, we were informed this week that we also, because we are in an as-is renewal for the city's vision coverage, we will have no rate increase on that up through January 1, 2024. So occasionally I do bring good news.
Well, congratulations. Thought to us, I guess. Are there any comments from the committee on that? From council? All right, seeing none, I move we forward this ordinance to council for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Baker. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. That concludes the business for the Finance and Administration Committee, and I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Consent Agenda for Emergency Adoption. Since 10A has been removed for an amendment that is needed to be made, we will move on to item 10B, which is part of the consent agenda. This ordinance stands for emergency passage unless someone wants to remove it for further discussion, which we have removed 10A. Would the clerk please read item 10B?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for city insurance for 2020-2021 appropriating funds, waiving competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve item 10B on the consent agenda for emergency approval?
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Baker, may I have a second, please?
I could.
Council- Councilmember Pecorale, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you. The ordinance 10B is approved with a vote seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Would the clerk please read item 10A?
An ordinance to appropriate monies from the CARES Act funds for COVID-19 pandemic-related expenses of the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. And Madam President, there is an amendment to this. Unfortunately, I just realized I neglected to actually send you all a copy of the new ordinance. Auditor Sisak, would you like to share the good news with council and what the amendment will bring?
Thank you. This actually was written by our city attorney, Chris Shook. I gave him the information this afternoon.
All right, let me unmute here. Yes, we received word from the city auditor today that we have additional funding that has now been given to the city from Franklin, Licking, and Fairfield County COVID relief funds. And so the ordinance will need to be amended to reflect the amounts that we received from those counties. Wait just a minute.
I have it here, Attorney Shook.
Yeah, I was trying to go back to my emails and find the numbers again.
Yeah, the Franklin County amount will now increase to $2,170,685.30. The Licking County appropriation will increase to $342,429.64. And the Fairfield County appropriation will increase to $47,693.86. So council would need to amend the resolution to read for those new amounts.
And just to give, just to give council a little preview of an ordinance that's going to be coming before you at the next October meeting, we did receive guidance from the United States Treasury Department as well as the state of Ohio, giving us more clarification as to how it is that we are able to spend this money. We anticipate that legislation will come before you that appropriates certain amounts, this money for public safety salaries and benefits.
Thank you. I have a question. These amounts that we are amending, these were the total amounts that we received? Or this, or is there a difference in the additional amount?
Madam President, the Franklin County amount already included the $500,000 that was already appropriated, so I'm I think the clerk has already read that.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, I have one more, one question. Again, this is the same amount that, I mean, is this amount is again, we're going to spend by the end of this year? It's a different money?
These, the dates are actually 12:30. We need to have it spent by, and in service or the goods and services done by 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council or the committee? May I have a motion to amend item 10A to increase the financial appropriation to Franklin County to $2,170,685.30? Increase Licking County's appropriation to $342,429.64? And increase Fairfield County's appropriation to $47,693.86? May I have a motion from council?
I'll motion.
Councilmember Baker, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Strickland, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 10A is amended with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. And Molly, do I have to have a motion to? Okay, may I have a motion to approve item 10A as amended? May I have a motion, please, from council?
I'm moving.
Councilmember Pecorale, may I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bryant, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was seven zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 10A is approved as amended, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, consent agenda for first reading. Items 11A through D are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances stand for first reading. Would the clerk please read items 11A through D?
Madam President, item A has been removed as it did not leave committee, so we'll just have items 11B through D.
Through D, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Media Propotions Enterprises, MPE, for the 2021 Tomato Festival, item C. An ordinance from the Reynoldsburg City Council supporting the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT project to resurface U.S. Route 40 and other related improvements in Franklin County. And item D, an ordinance authorizing renewal of the city's dental insurance coverage with Delta Dental for the period from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022, and waiving competitive bidding.
And these ordinances will stand for a first reading. Item 12 is a consent agenda for second reading. Items 12A through F are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances will stand for a second reading. Would the clerk please read items 12A through F?
Item A, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the Parks and Recreation Department. Item B, an ordinance to dissolve Reynoldsburg Economic Development, Inc., and the former Reynoldsburg Community Improvement Corporation, and transfer any remaining funds to the General Fund of the City to be distributed for charitable purposes. Item C, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to remove equipment from the city's fixed asset list for the Reynoldsburg Police Department. Item D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the project grant loan agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the East Main Street Roadway Improvements. Item E, an ordinance assuming maintenance responsibility for the full width of summer road between the southernmost boundary of parcel number 010-018030-00.001 and the northernmost boundary of parcel number 010-018030-00.000 upon annexation of said parcels into the city of Reynoldsburg, agreeing to cooperate in the maintenance of said roadway and indemnifying the township of Etna and Licking County. And item F, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation to implement coverage for individuals sentenced by the Reynoldsburg Mayor's Court to perform community service supervised by the Criminal Justice Administrator.
These ordinances will stand for a second reading. Item 13 is a consent agenda for third reading and approval. Items 13A through H are part of a consent agenda. All of these ordinances will stand for a third read and approval. Would the clerk please read items 13A through H?
An ordinance creating the wagon and road tax increment financing incentive districts, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district. Item B, an ordinance to establish Chapter 163 Civilian Review Board for the codified ordinances of the city of Reynoldsburg. Item C, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Unappropriated General Fund to the Police Department for donated monies. Item D, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase radios for the Police Department and waive competitive bidding. Item E, an ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to certify nuisance costs 2019 for collection by the Franklin County Auditor. Item F, an ordinance authorizing the clerk of council to certify nuisance costs 2019 for collection by the Licking County Auditor. Item G, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ODOT for guard rail repairs on State Route 256 within the city of Reynoldsburg. And item H, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHNT for engineering plans and preparation of bid documents for the 2021 Street Improvement Program and appropriating funds therefore.
May I have a motion to approve items 13A through H on the consent agenda for a third reading and approval?
Council President?
Yes.
Before that, I would like to have item B pulled out from there, the civilian review board, to talk about that individually.
Which one?
13B.
Oh, for the civilian review board?
Yes, please.
So would we just approve all of them except for the B?
Yes, Madam President, we would vote on items 13A and C through H.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve 13A and C through H, please?
Motion.
Councilmember, I believe that was Baker. May I have a second?
Second.
First Savadi, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Savadi.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, that was a seven zero vote for items M, what are we, 13A and C through H.
Thank you. Ordinance A has been approved and C through H are also approved, seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. We'll move on to item 14, other council matters.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam President, we need to go back to item 13B.
B.
And Councilmember Cotner, is there, would you like to have some discussion on that? All right.
Thank you. I just, I don't need to talk a lot about it. It's, you know, we're at the third reading on it. But it's something that, you know, I support our police department and our leadership and what they're doing so, so well. Several of you joined today at the swearing in of a new deputy chief who's a female, a new African-American male being sworn as an officer. There's a lot of positives happening in our police department with our leadership and with our officers, and I simply just, you know, this board, council, council has an obligation and a duty to make sure our officers are acting appropriately, that our leadership within the department is acting appropriately. And to put another civilian review board as an obstacle for our officers serving is not something that I can support. So I wanted to make sure we separated that and, you know, I, I've talked to several officers and, and I know we had the FOP on here, and they'll accept it, you know, I get it, but there's, you know, it's, they accept it because they really don't get a lot of a choice. And, you know, and granted, it doesn't overstep bounds. It continues to keep the rules in place. The review board doesn't, you know, maintain powers that are overreaching, but I still feel like this is a step away from what we should do and what our officers should be getting from us. So I just wanted to make those comments and I appreciate you separating this item for a separate vote. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from council?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Strickland?
Yes, I would like to say a couple of things here. Thank you also, Councilmember Cotner, for your comments. And I believe that with the civilian board that we are, will be in place hopefully here soon. This is just another step of transparency when it comes to our police officers and according to our neighbors. Even though someone who have lived here for 19 years have never experienced racism or discrimination, that is perfectly fine. However, this is just one other, another step how we can bring our community together. By having the FOP support and some of our police officers support, to me, this is just another step to saying we are the city of respect. I personally have spoke to some of our business owners here in Reynoldsburg that felt as though there were discrimination based off the race because they are black. Let me just be transparent. I believe that our officers are doing a well, a great job here. So to me, this is just saying, yes, we hear you. We hear your concerns to our neighbors. We are also listening and backing our police officers here. But again, for me, it's just another level of respect. It's another level of acknowledgement that yes, things do happen in every department, in every city. And I believe the time is now to move forward with the civilian board. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bryant, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just, I wanted to say, you know, thank you, Councilwoman Cotner, for your comments. But I do want to say, I think that there is an opportunity here rather than an obstacle. I think that, you know, by and large, we have a fantastic law enforcement agency here in Reynoldsburg. But things do happen sometimes, and I think it's an opportunity to allow, you know, the resident or whoever is, is making any assertion, gives them an opportunity to, you know, bring that to the attention of the officer that, you know, maybe, you know, as, as, as white men and women, we don't always see things that happen. There's a lot of things that can slip by us unnoticed. And, you know, I'd like to think of this as an opportunity as, you know, potentially a teaching opportunity for some of our officers if, if that becomes necessary, but ultimately, this is transparency. And it allows a feeling of comfort when there's transparency. It doesn't give that, that feeling that we're trying to hide something here. And I think ultimately this will be that opportunity as opposed to an obstacle.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry. Councilman Cotner, I think raised his hand before I said anything. Okay.
I could, either way.
I couldn't see him, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I mean, either way, it's just fine. I, again, I, I agree that, that I love the learning aspect. I think that our officers are, are. Um, I think that our officers are, are continually trained. And I, and I love that Chief Baker is, you know, making a priority to continue to evolve in the department. I think that's a, a great point. Um, you know, I just, like I said, my, my feeling is still just specifically about this board. Each thing that, um, you know, both council members just made are fantastic points. And I, I do agree that, uh, there's things that we may not see, I may not see or feel. I want us to be accountable. I want us as council members to be accountable. Um, you know, um, Councilwoman Bryant, you know, just, we got an email, um, just a few days ago from someone talking about, um, racist concern in the fire department. And, and even though that wasn't our control, um, you know, I immediately reached out to our fire chief and, um, found out that that person, you know, wasn't here in our town. I replied back to the email to that resident and, you know, there was an immediate action that, that of concern, um, connected from council, connected up to even our fire department, which, like I said, is a partner of ours, not in our control. So the, the concept and the idea that, um, concerns should be addressed, um, and, and any kind of intimidation and racism should be, um, put down and, and trained to, to navigate through as well, I am one hundred percent in favor of. So again, I appreciate that we're having a positive dialogue about this. So thank you both very much and, and all for the comments. Um, and I, and again, I continue to believe that we can always do better, um, as, as our police officers, police force and leadership. But I, I love the path that they are taking. I love the efforts that are being made. Um, and, and I, I see the growth that continues. And, you know, like when, when Councilman Salvati said a couple of weeks ago that, you know, we hope this board never does anything. You know, this is not a board that's actively meeting and engaged. It's one that's going to respond. And as I said, I think that's where we've got to make sure we, as council members, are holding our leadership within the department and the force accountable. You know, we, we approve the contracts that are, that are, you know, negotiated between the city and the FOP. Uh, you know, we have our state attorney come in and talk about when there's allegations and lawsuits. And so, like I said, I feel that it's just more appropriate that we, we handle and work together, um, as opposed to passing it to this board of a civilian review board. So, uh, again, thank you, though, for the, the comments and the feedback and the interaction. It's, it's, it's good, um, good dialogue. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, did you have comments?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you so much. Um, I do appreciate this, uh, transparent dialogue as well, uh, Councilman Cotner. Today, I witnessed the swearing in of our new deputy chief and our newest officer Shaw. Seeing them take. As I stated before, I see the city as a partner with the police and we stand shoulder to shoulder with them. I see the civilian review board as a bridge for both RPD and our community members. This review board is not in response to any situation. It is a proactive measure the city is putting in place. Reynoldsburg, as we all have know, and we heard reference, is a city of respect. I see the civilian review board as completing the channels of communication. I acknowledge in the past, there have been some concerns with certain officers and we are working to address those concerns. This review board will allow neighbors another communication tool if needed. Again, if needed, after submitting any concerns to the police department. Thank you, Attorney Shook and team for creating this foundation. It further confirms that we are the city of respect and I fully support this legis- legislation. Thank you. Yeah, Attorney.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Uh, I just want to make a couple of comments. As, as this council knows, uh, I rarely give any kind of personal commentary during the city council meetings. Uh, I understand my role here is to give legal advice. Um, I will say that the last nine and a half months, I probably more than anybody here in this meeting have had the honor and privilege to work, uh, with our police officers. And I have a tremendous amount of faith in their ability and in their service to our community. And there's nothing about this legislation whatsoever that is directed at them or their professionalism. Uh, this is something, you know, we worked very hard on. Uh, we were very careful to incorporate and involve the Fraternal Order of Police because we felt, we felt that, that their position was important. Not just because we have a collective bargaining agreement with them, uh, because they represent our officers. And we needed our officers to know that, that this was not directed at them. We have the utmost faith in their abilities, in the leadership that Chief Baker and new chap- deputy chief, uh, are providing. Um, and again, I would reiterate, you know, Councilman Salvati's comments from the last meeting, that our hope is that we will have a civilian review board that has very little to do. And I can tell you that from everything that I've seen just so far this year, I have not seen a case yet this year that I would have considered, uh, to be something that would have ever gone before the civilian review board. Um, so I, I think this is, this is something that we are doing to be proactive. Um, I do hope that council passes this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
President Jenkins?
Yes, Councilmember Pecorale?
All right. Uh, thank you, President Jenkins. Uh, let me tell you about what happened today. Um, we were in the, we were in the shopping mall. There were two police officers standing there and my son just jumped out of the car and he was shouting Officer Heinz. And the thing, only thing he knows is that Officer Heinz was the one who keeps to come together and just give them some stickers like this, uh, every time he sees because he was, he used to be in, together with him all the time, like all, all of the kids also. So I believe that, uh, in Reynoldsburg, our police officers are doing excellent jobs. I just want to thank them for the service. And also went through this legislation. And also we had a comment, uh, in the last, maybe I had a thorough study of these things on different level. I think this will support our officers in the long run and also to our communities. It is, again, will bring us together and I have a full support, uh, for this legislation. Uh, thank you.
Council President, I'd like to say some, something about this.
For Baker.
Um, one thing, I'm going to just put it out there. I support this legislation, first thing. Second of all, this is an opportunity for both hands, the community and the police force, to come together and do something great. And in this legislation, it makes those who serve on this board learn what the police department does so they can get a better feel of what a police, the police have to do on a daily basis. This is, it's not easy being somebody that has to enforce the law. Just like it's not easy being a ref on the football field. You're always going to have somebody that's going to argue with you over the rules. But this gives a great opportunity, a learning opportunity. Let me point that learning opportunity between the two departments. And I think we're on the right step to amend something that's deeply, um, has deeply hurt this country as a whole when it comes to race relations and the, and the trusting of the police force. I think our police force is doing an excellent job here in Reynoldsburg. And when I, at the end of every council meeting, when I said, when I say thank you to the police force, it's not just to say it, just to say it. I'm saying it because the proof is out there. And so, and I have, also, I have the utmost respect for Chief Baker. Not just because he has the same last ma- lane, name as mine, but he's doing an awesome job with our police force. And it is being recognized. So with this, this is just a step closer to bridging the gap that's long been, um, divided. And so I full heartedly support this legislation. And like everybody said, I'm going to reiterate it too. Like Councilman Salvati said at the last council meeting, I hope this review board has nothing to do. So that means we're doing a good job. So, but that's all I got to say. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? So do we need to read the ordinance again and then have a vote on this separately, Molly?
We'll need to have a vote. I don't think I need to, Attorney Shook, unless you think so. I don't think we need to read it again. I think you just need to ask for a motion to approve it in a second and then do a roll call.
Is that correct, Attorney Shook? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve item thirteen B on the consent agenda for a third reading and approval? Uh, Councilwoman Strickland, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lawson Rowe, would the clerk please read, please call the roll?
Councilmember Salvati.
Aye.
Councilmember Pecorale.
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Bryant.
Aye.
And Councilmember Strickland.
Aye.
Madam President, the vote was six one.
Ordinance thirteen B is approved with six affirmative votes and one negative vote. We will move on to item fourteen, other council matters. Does anyone on council have any other further items that they would like to discuss this evening?
Madam President, uh, may I just offer a, a big shout out and a word of thanks to our teachers and our work from home parents that are, um, juggling, um, our young people that are home learning virtually. So first of all, the shout out to the parents, I mean, I'm sorry, to the teachers that are, um, on the front lines, if you will, in the classroom, face to face with their students in desk. Um, second of all, um, shout out to those wonderful teachers that are actually teaching and, and meeting with our students in, um, environments such as this, in boxes. And then three, a super shout out to the work from home parents that are in environments such as this, in boxes, and they have their students positioned around their home learning. I've had an opportunity to, um, participate in second grade virtually the past couple of weeks. And so I have a new respect. And so I just want to hats off to the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. You forgot to add in the grandparents and the aunts and uncles and everyone else that's having the help in this process. Um, and it just doesn't, it's just not for the high school or elementary or middle school. Um, a shout out for those, um, parents who have students in college who are learning this process as well. Um, it's been a learning process for us all, I believe, in trying to learn how to, uh, handle Zoom and how to deal with Facebook Live and all of the different types of technology that we've all had to learn and, um, adjust to. And with that also, um, hopefully soon, we'll be able to meet in council chambers. We have our equipment in and it's being tested. And our, uh, clerk Molly is testing it and making sure that we're going to be able to meet. And hopefully, the next council meeting, um, we do plan to meet in person. So hopefully, once we get all that technology, um, under our belt, um, we'll be able to meet, um, at our next meeting, October twenty-sixth. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add this evening?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Baker?
Two things. One is, um, go Raiders. They got to play off another playoff game. Let's, um, bring this one home too. Uh, two, I'd like to continue my tradition of thanking the police department, the firefighters, our men and women in the service, and those who are serving in the retail industry and a lot logistic industry for help keeping, uh, things going in this COVID, uh, time. And just like everybody, I, I can't wait to see the light at the end of the tunnel where this is over. But I like to say thank you to those and the teachers too. So that's a shout out to all the teachers who are working hard, uh, during this pandemic to make sure that our young people are getting a quality education. And that's a special shout out to my wife as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? I'd like to thank everyone for participating this evening in this virtual meeting. Council's next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October the twenty-sixth at six thirty PM. We will be in person in Reynoldsburg City Council Chambers. As there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned and the time is eight twenty-seven. Have a great evening and thank you.
You.
Good evening.
They say.
Good night.